...seven. We could begin tonight, I'd like to ask for a motion to come out of executive session. And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. A motion to seal the minutes of executive session. Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then, Mr. George, if I could ask you to call the roll.
Gregg, last name?
Here.
Karen Carlson, here. Karen Gee?
Here.
Hannah Duxbury?
Here.
Glenn Shidley?
Here.
Lynn Waters?
Present.
Nicholas Bond?
Here.
Okay, and Mr. Spreman, if I could ask you to lead us in the pleasure building, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get all our main standing?
Lord, help our council achieve a strong desire to do good, be honest, serve others, and faithfully fulfill our obligations to our constituents, neighbors, friends, and family. Help our council to be ethical in all of our dealings and fulfill our obligations to our community. Amen.
Amen. If you could review the emergency evacuation plan.
The two exits in the rear and the front door.
Okay, thank you, Ron and Shrum, as always. Okay. The Mr. Manager presentation of the police station/human services building is next on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
On the other.
At this time, I'll call up our Chief of Police and our Director of Human Services. Frank McDonald and Director Sherlock.
Good evening. We put that, gave you a couple packets here.
I've noticed that it's very hard to hear. The mic started out loud.
Hello.
Hello.
So, we spent the last two weeks after we had come up initially to present our proposal in meeting with architects. In your packets, you should have found over the weekend sort of a wonder of the world about how we arrived back at 12 million, which obviously was a bigger number than we first thought. So, we went back, met with several architects, and really found we couldn't do it for less than 12, right in the $11 million range. Learned a lot, but really realized there's value in the project that we hope you see. You know, at 12 million, you get two buildings for the price of really what was one in 2014. You look at the first part of the packet here, the financials are actually less than they were in 2014. The first year of that bond debt service was at 920,000. This year with a lower interest rate, we're actually around 805,000 to 880,000 in that first year of that debt service. So, actually, you get two buildings for the price really of one in the last time, 2014. And we think it's really valuable. The cost of building a new PD, we found a range of 375 per square foot. So, you take that new construction, apply it to the human services building, it comes down considerably to 250,000. Our retrofit of that building is obviously a lot less than a square foot.
Okay. Mrs. Sherlock, would you like to add?
Sure. I think what we're looking for tonight, we know that this whole process was very quick because when John first proposed his capital budget, you know, it was too high. And when he approached me about combining with the buildings, we do a lot of work with our police force. And of course, yes, while there are, there is a senior center, there's a Department of Human Services, Adult Day here, there's a program for folks with developmental disabilities, case management. So, bringing all that together seemed like the right thing to do. I think that what we're looking for is permission to go forward to at least get it on the ballot. We have not spent any money for drawings because it seemed kind of silly to do that unless we knew at least there was an opportunity to get it on the ballot in November. We do have a marketing strategy. The people that we'll be working with for the drawings and that kind of thing have already presented us with a marketing strategy. I can tell you that the people from my facility are very excited. They don't want to move from Wood Street because it's so convenient for lots of people to get there. I mean, we have people that walk there, we have people that take the bus, we have people that have vehicles, that kind of thing. So, it is more, even though it's not in the center of town, it's in the most populated end of town. Clearly, you know, it's a big decision, but I think that since we've been at trying to do our building and have gone to Flat River, invested money that we received from a federal award through Jack Reed's office, wasted $200,000 over there, and then had to use the rest, I think that we're pretty aware of what we need of places that probably are not as appropriate. I know that Councilwoman Carlson had some concerns about transportation. Actually, the transportation will be less because the buses won't be there and the monitors. And that's a big problem for us right now because sometimes they're not too respectful of the fact that we have elders and we have people with disabilities, and they seem to send the message down with the police that they are watching, and then they go slow. So, actually, there'll be less traffic. As presented in your packet, there is a road, existing road behind the ball field that the police will be able to access only egress and access. So, we won't have sirens running to the neighborhood and that kind of thing. We're pretty friendly with most of our neighbors. Matter of fact, they, we help them in one way or another. They either come to the facility for services from the social workers, or they come for activities, et cetera. So, I'm pretty confident that we would be able to make a good case for this particular building. Again, we're asking that it be put on the bill as ballot so that we can get ready to go. We're championing the country, getting ready to get these people out there and stop that marketing campaign.
Okay, you guys know, both know that I absolutely think you both need new facilities. We know that, but I just have to play devil's advocate just a little because that's... Me. And... Oh, speaking of densely populated, so I know last time, well, I don't think last time that there were any real neighborhood meetings, you know, if you're planning with make the person, like you, the applicant, send out your letters. And since it is such a densely populated area, one of my big concerns is egress and ingress. I can see trying to go down Wood Street to South Main at 430 and a solid wall of traffic trying to go down towards Dave's, and you can't get a cop car out. I mean, I've been, luckily, I've always come the other way, so I usually know we're stuck in that traffic. The backup is pretty awful. Plus, I know you are going to egress or ingress, well, maybe just degress, to Sandy Bottom. And I figured out where that, it's like a little pathway right now, right at the bridge. Right?
To bolt?
Yeah. Well, you can't tell it's a road unless you know it's there. Sandy Bottom can get really dicey, too, at times when it's all backed up, plus going back, you know, each way. So, my concern is traffic, and are you thinking about putting a light at Sandy Bottom there to stop, you know, an emergency light for somebody's coming down?
Similar to a fire station there, if they come across.
Right, to trip it? Yeah.
I mean, we don't really have issues coming out of PD now as it is on Main, and that's pretty heavily traveled. So, if we have to leave there in an emergency way, do people need to go out? So, I don't see an issue too much. I know that 430 traffic is pretty good, but if we punch the road up to Sandy Bottom...
It just sits there. Yeah. I mean, going towards South Main Street, not the other way.
So, I think our patrols would avoid that area, they'd go back and around, you know.
But are you going to do a neighborhood meeting of some sort?
We could, I'm sure, you know, if the residents wanted, I'm sure we'd do an information campaign. There was some people saying, I know that that area is populated, but to me, it's no more populated than a PD area. We have houses adjacent to us, we have a church right next to our parking lot.
Well, I was also thinking whether the roads are configured right there in front of the senior center.
So, I think we'd look at improvement there as well.
Okay. What are you going to do with school buses?
That, I mean, it's not my call. I've talked to the school department. I'm not sure they're in love with the thin building behind Pat's building. But I would think across the street might be suited to that area if you bring the school department's physical plant into the same building, but the actual school department. Just a course of action. I wouldn't speak for them. I've talked to them a little bit, or the police station. You know, you've got the other school down in Oak Haven that's open. I think there's some options there.
And have you looked at any, if Wood Street, because of a traffic study, which I hope would be done, you know, a real traffic study, but if you went in front of planning, Russ would say, Mr. Frost would say, you've got to have a planning study probably. Have you looked at any other properties? I mean, the one that comes to my mind is behind Burberry King. I can't believe they're not desperate enough to just practically give it to us.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you be on a better bus route if you had both buildings by Burberry King? I know it's got a wetlands issue, but so, you know, John was the hillside.
I think that there's been, over the years that I've been around, there's been a number of plans that have put into play, and that was one of them.
Yeah.
That was going to be the central town office, if you will. But again, to me, it's more costly because now you have to purchase the land. You already own the land.
Well, that's true. I'm just thinking they have to be really tested. Well, you know...
I'm not, I don't know about that desperation, but I think when we have existing buildings, we have existing land, it's town land across from our parking lot. So, that, to me, would say...
We would up that by Angel Cross.
Yes, I think so.
Well, the other thing is, I know when RGP did the study for Oak Haven, right, it was eight million to build new, but it was 12 to renovate, or 10 to renovate?
Two million more to renovate.
10 million more to renovate. So, I was thinking, 2 million more to renovate, sorry. Are you going to look at renovation versus...
That's all in your packet.
We will.
Yeah, I know, but these are preliminary numbers, right?
Well, they also gave us pretty solid numbers.
They are pretty solid?
That was my question at the end of, who gave you these numbers of pretty solid?
RGP Architects, Northeast Collaborative, and Secoche Associates, who all, they've all built public safety complexes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I had read that, but I just wanted everybody to hear that.
So, we spent the last two weeks meeting with a lot of them, trying to get at least preliminary numbers. Obviously, you can't get an in-depth study without spending money, which we would do again to really nudge up the specifics of the project after. But I think we don't want to do that after, we don't have to bond, you know, we know that there's a downwind.
And once you have a bond, if it comes in more, there won't be any more.
That's right. But they already know that. We don't want to undercut that value.
No, I know, but I'm just, I mean, we went for a $14 million station two years ago, and now we're...
Well, we have the 12.
That was 12 two years ago.
And the interest rates are lower now, actually. The actual bond debt service is less.
Well, we're going to be paying on the debt service till next budget, right? Next fiscal budget?
We will initiate a bond until the fiscal eighteen.
And what are we looking at, a two- to three-year window for all this to be finished?
Well, if we build that building, we build first, and then you move Pat's folks over and services over that building, and then we look at PD. The good part is that we know lost continuity with the department, like Lincoln Smithfield, they have construction going on top of their operation.
Right.
So, for us, we need to kind of be legged waiting in, you know, in that area, that space. We could gut that to the bones, that building. The building is one level, it's 20,000 square feet, it's almost quadruple our size above ground. We have 10,000 square feet at the PD, five is underground, really, in the basement. So, that would be about 20,000 square feet one level if you build a core garden.
Sure. If the roads need to be addressed, is that in here? Because I see buildings like...
They, in part of their project analysis, which was brief, but punching that road out behind that ball field is part of planning.
What I mean also in front?
We didn't really address like that.
That triangle coming in there.
I mean, you could put a light there, a flashing light, either side. I don't see it having an issue coming in or out of there, particularly if we want to use Sandy Bottoms on Main, egress and ingress, for the people who's on. We would probably try to avoid, particularly around Rush Hour time, something like that front.
And I have to tell you, you know, and the school buses can't help it, but they're tied into that Rush Hour stuff, too.
Oh, yeah.
And when they're making turns, and if they're both coming from both, and they come from all three, I mean, we've had them stopped at all three, and that adds to more of the issue. So, I think, I think you're going to see less traffic. That's one problem.
Well, I mean, I'm...
Which is great, which is free, and which is good.
I just had questions that I had asked, so.
Mr. McGee?
Yeah, I've got a couple comments. I'm absolutely in support of this. I mean, I was in support the last time, and I'm fine with the voters going out and making their decisions, the decisions not on our backs. I think it's great that we're going to get two buildings for the price of what we were trying to get one for. I mean, I know it's a tough sell with, you know, raising taxes in order to fund this, but we need to take pride in our town. Now, the police station is the ball, and we have a great place to park it, and we need to have a new building. My point is, it's not going to get any cheaper to do this the longer we wait. I think the time is now, and I think that the, I mean, I like the idea that the voters are going to, you know, make that decision for us, but I am definitely in support of it. I think you've done your homework. I think it's a great idea about having that access at Egress Road on Sandy Bottom. I wasn't aware that you could get by without building a bridge over that river. I didn't know they would, they went by the river. Well, that's great because I think you're going to avert a lot of the problems with the South Main Street, 430 rush, it is a mess over there, but I think by you guys going out on Main Road like South Main Street is a great idea. So, I'm absolutely in support of it, and you have, you know, my support, hopefully the taxpayers can see. You're going to have a real good campaign to get out there and make these people aware and let them know that, you know, what's entirely, they did a good job last year, and it got defeated, not by a lot, but I'm hoping that you can really get out, get the word out and do whatever resources you have that let the people know.
Well, I think our mistake apart of it was not having a project drawing and not spending any money on that. So, we put in some impact fees that we have, you know, sharing, and getting that, you know, assistance to help us with the media as well. We did a good job, I think, of telling a story about how our PD was in need and all the problems, but we didn't necessarily show the project. So, we'll do it better than we got with that.
Well, you absolutely have my support.
Thank you.
Refresh my memory, was there a location last time around outside of the Price at Sloman? Was there a location designated to?
Wood Street.
Was it? It was just going to be at Wood Street?
Right across the street. We were going to take, you know, we were going to bite into that land across the street, which is 20 acres. But I think there's an opportunity maybe for the town, if they want to down the road, to see that complex. The town hall may have to move someday, we don't know. I mean, that's an area that, if we did this project, could we maybe support town expansion, whether it's Ball Street or other buildings?
And again, for your draw up, you have the human service building at Senior Center, $4,350,000, and then the police station at $5,650,000, which totals the 10. Then you have an additional, the other 2 million is for the dispatch equipment, furniture, owners bonding and owners' costs, and parking site development, all combined at 2 million. So, that, you're, again, I've heard you, 12 million, you both stand pretty firm on that that should do. And as Mr. McGee said, we are looking at two buildings that are both needed, sorely needed, and maybe, hopefully, we'll get twice the support going at this way that we got last time. I also like the fact that we own the land because I know, I go by Brookside every day as I go to Wood Estate, and that's a huge section of land. It's too bad we don't own it, but we don't own it. And that would definitely, and I don't know how desperate they are to sell it because it's been that way. Brookside said they're coming soon. I think it's been that way. I don't know, I don't want to say 10 years.
10 years.
Fifteen.
I bet you it's more like 15.
No, no, 10 years. I was on the council.
All right, you are, okay. I defer to Mr. Allen.
Maybe 11 years, he might have gone to 5.
Either way, I like this idea, and then in the transition where the one building gets done first, and then, with no interruptions, then the police building can get done, as you continue working on Main Street in the interim, whether it's two years, two and a half years, whatever it would take. But owning it is good. I know that area very well. I've lived in Oak Haven 37 years. Wood Street, South Main Street, Sandy Bottom, Tai O Gavino, up to 117. As I said before, that's a main sectional artery, it's like a heart. It's like the heart with the arteries going out and the blood vessels. And I know that owning it and then just trying to take care of where the school buses are going to go, that's two big pluses. That's a big plus owning it and then finding out where the school buses are going to go. I know that nobody likes, I don't know any neighbor that's going to be cheering in that particular area, and I don't know how many residents are. Sometimes, for the good of the town, whether they're happy or unhappy, it's got to happen. A good PR program is good, you know, so like, say, how they're not going to be bottled up in that general area. And I know that the police have to get out, they find a way to get out with their lights, et cetera. But I think it's a, it's a great location, and I think if we can do it for this 12 million, both buildings, and tie in the, I guess we're tying in EMS, aren't we, Colonel?
There is some opportunity, I think, even dispatch.
Dispatch?
I talked to David Brown about doing a combined fire police dispatch.
Okay.
That's going to take a little bit of...
We've got the area, even if that's a little part C further down the line. The space is there, and we own it. Okay. Others that might want to, excuse me?
He's in support of the dispatch examination. I think our contract runs, Town Base was fire dispatch, two contracts, it's about 385 a year for your, and a lot of that he spends on personnel. But if we can do a combined police-fire dispatch center where, you know, this personnel is still contracted, come in and work with us, I think interruptibility, you saw with some news recently about mutual interruptibility.
Right.
His building, Merck Building, is pretty integrated when it comes to computers, doesn't have computer aided dispatch. So, even the simplest kind of data mining, you want to get out of that, you're not going to get, it's really by hand. It's an upgrade for them.
Well, again, again, going back to the location, it's for the fire departments too, it's made a heart, heart. Anyone else? Mr. Duxter?
Just before you go on, yeah? With our architects, we did bring in the fact that Fireline Dispatch, they should configure that within the building.
It would make sense.
So, we tried to think of everything we could possibly think of.
And I'd like to add on that note that the town currently spends about $400,000 a year for that, paying for that service. And so, there would be some savings with the inclusion in the town facility.
Okay, that's a good point, too. Other council comments? Go right ahead.
I did take Chief Obie up on a tour when you were trying to get the police station last time, and I 100% agree. I also am concerned about the traffic, so I'm hoping that there will be a traffic study done. I've sat in that line of traffic a lot. That's my other concern. The wetlands, that's not going to be an issue over there with that road exiting Sandy Bottom?
In 2014, when we looked at that site, and Chief Obie was pretty familiar with the 2010 floods, it actually didn't get wet in 2010 floods. Down, kind of cascades off down to the river, but surprisingly, it's dry.
We built the driest building in town. We never lost power, we had no water at all. We all thought it was wet everywhere.
Do you know how much the feasibility study is going to, you talked to RGP, I guess? RGP?
So, A and E, you know, it can range for as much as you want to pay for it. I don't think the town should spend more than 15, maybe 20,000 dollars on A and E for a project, get this together, building picture, to do, you know, the interior layout and kind of work through the services she has, which she needs in the same class. I don't think it's going to be a crazy cost. Obviously, those other costs, you know, bond is granted, but those costs will be rolled into a percentage for whichever architect gets the bid. So, we would send it all up to bid on the $14 million. And then that, whoever gets that bid is, you know, that's part of the budget.
And you said impact fees would be used for that initially?
You did ask.
Can we use them for that, Bob?
We checked with the solicitor, his opinion. We checked with the solicitor, his opinion was that we could use them in the event that the bond did not pass, then the two departments would be responsible to replenish or give the money back to the impact fee account out of their general budgets, which we could handle in fiscal eighteen.
So, in other words, they don't technically meet the requirement for using impact fees? We'd have to pay them back if we didn't get the bond?
No, they do.
Is that an understanding?
I'll explain to you. They do meet it, but the way the impact fee statute reads, it doesn't take account of bond referendum, where the money that's spent to try to plan and present to the public what this project will be like has to be spent before the bond is approved. So, it's almost like money that is spent conditionally on the assumption that it will be approved. And so, then the question is, well, what happens if it isn't approved? And the only fair way to deal with it, in my opinion, the law is silent on this, is I think you have to pay it back into the impact fee fund because that's a fund that's held essentially in trust by the town, holding money paid by developers and held on behalf of the public. So, you have to replenish it if the bond referendum doesn't pass, and I think, I think that's something they're well aware of now.
And let me, let me ask a question, approximately, again, the cost, if in fact...
We've been quoted 9,000, 10,000.
Right. So, in the big, in the big picture, hopefully, the bond would pass, but if the bond, for whatever reason, didn't pass, that's a small portion of money for it to be paid back by two of your agencies, eliminating this or that within your budget. So, I don't think that's, I mean, as long as it can be done, and then even if it had to be paid back, I, that's minimal.
Normally, these are considered construction costs. So, they fall within the scope of what is allowed for impacts, impact fee expenditures. But I think if you're looking at it from a public information standpoint, I think the public deserves to know what this thing is going to be like.
Right.
And the only way to get there for them is to publish that. If they want to use the impact fees, I think the words I use were, they do so at their own peril, because if it gets rejected, they have to pay it back.
So, I want to make sure on the amount, because I thought you just said about 15,000, and then you just said five to nine or something.
Well, no more than...
Which is it?
No more than 15.
One, one company quoted us five, another quoted us nine, just on this initiative, we tried, we were on the front end, saying, hey, can you get us drawing? So, I think if we wanted to spend more on media, we would get it out and see who would be doing, you know, architectural performance costs. We would, we would go, we'd set a cap, or we'd, we'd have to come up with a council to get approval for that, and so you would see those bids.
One of the architects has already done on our last approach, attempt to get a bond in the past. We linked in with the school, and the police, that was one, the police department's one, and everything failed. So, they're pretty familiar with our building and the construct, which is going to help them when they're trying to figure out, police can take out, leave, you know, what they can save. So, I would expect that that's going to save some money, too. And they've done police work, and they've done multi, multi-service buildings, so.
All right, I just have, I want to make sure I understand this again now. So, then, the increase to service the debt for the residents would be about 1 and 1/2%? Okay, so this year, we're looking at about a 3.15% increase, Bobby?
When we get to that portion of the agenda, you'll see it's down to 3.01.
When we get to that portion of the agenda, you'll see it's down to three point zero one.
Okay, so we're looking at about a three percent increase this year and then you're, this would add another one and a half later. I'm all for putting it up to the people and I do think it needs to be done. I'm a little skeptical whether it's actually going to get anywhere. The reasons are, number one, it didn't pass last time. They're gonna see the number, people are gonna see the number, they're not gonna see that it's two for one. The other thing is, they're getting a three percent increase this year. And you're gonna ask them to vote in to add another one and a half percent to their tax rate in the future. All in the same year that you've got two fire districts that are in trouble. Well, one is back on track, getting there. And Western College, we just asked for a three percent increase as well. So I am supportive of it, I am, and I am wanting the people to speak on it. I fully believe they should speak on it. I'm not sure this is the right time. That's not, no, no, no. I say this in November, I'm not sure this is the right year to do it with a lot going on. And then we're also asking about putting, adding in the EMS part-time director. There's just, just a lot of money that we're asking the taxpayers to cough up and I would vote for it, but I, I just am a little skeptical that the people.
This is.
I do think marketing was a problem last time.
Well, also they were taking out a lot of, there were a number of folks that were upset that they were taking out a lot of those trees. You know, in that land that is adjacent to our parking lot, that a lot of that was gonna be destroyed and that was, that was another big thing.
I don't know that it's ever a great time to ask for a tax increase. I know every three years, we have to do different contracts, we have ups in taxes, so it's never great. So it'll be up to us to try to come to the town and say, hey, this is part of the strategic plans for town. It's part, you know, our plan really can't be putting us into old school buildings, that's not a great plan either, we don't really wanna do that. It's, to make good money after that, you take in a building that's nineteen sixty, maybe across the street.
How old is the building there about?
That's around the same, but we're talking about a complete gut, that building. It's two wings and we're talking about a building in between, so. And it's one level, it's not a hundred thousand per feet, the building there that we would have to maintain.
You're still gutting an old building, you're still gonna find things that, I mean, you will.
I think the other thing is our building was much, much better maintained. One of the problems we had with Flat River is there weren't a lot of bandits put in. Problems weren't corrected the way they were supposed to be corrected. So at Wood Street, they were corrected the way they should.
Okay, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Bosonier.
My question was, you said that you'll apply for federal grants, EMA grants. Any idea or thought as to what kind and how much those grants might be worth?
Well, there's a dispatch branch that East Greenwich got, their dispatch center is about seventy-two thousand. I think we would have to start looking. EMA, that's actually a shelter, that big community building in the middle. So we could use that sort of leverage for some EMA work, I think. But we don't have exactly what you're gonna look out there. So we would have to go and search. But during the project, it's two phases. So it'll give us some time to really dig in and call center to read. You know, I think that bridge actually up on Sandy Bottom could use a little work too. So we'll start to, you know, seek out legislative help maybe there as well.
Yeah, I have to, you know, echo the sentiment of Mrs. Duxbury. Two years ago, it didn't, you know, it was with that and I think that it's gonna be difficult for people to swallow, you know, I know when we spoke before, we were just talking eight million, thinking maybe, you know, maybe that may be the area, but I understand, you know, when you're gonna build something, it's gonna cost X number of dollars to do it. I'm always forward putting in front of the people who are doing it. But we talked about a plan, you know, again, a strategic plan. Should it go down, we're gonna do this every two years? I mean, you know, we're gonna, you know, I mean.
I think we would look again. Our footprint, the PD is difficult to expand in, so I don't think we have room.
I know, I've been through the area, I've had the tour and it's very difficult. I just don't know if the, your everyday working man, taxpayer who's, you know, worried about paying his bills, has his own problems and he's not necessarily worried about the ins and outs of those particular problems. Again, I'm all for bringing it to the people, I think it deserves that and I'm hopeful that maybe the people will see it, but I, you know, in my mind, I don't think that they will supply it.
Well, we won't know unless we try. I guess that's the bottom line. There you go.
I don't think you can just give in.
No, good.
It's not right.
Read it to death, may pass a may not.
PD is terrible, we need help.
Oh, we absolutely agree and again, and I think that the start of it, again, is laying your plan out and your marketing plan and showing the people, okay, this is what the dollar values are, this is what it's gonna be worth for our town going forward. And it's gotta create a good vision for them to make a good decision for themselves.
We're trying to make it a little bit of a value with the building, rehab and the same price for the texture lesson and the debt service now with the interest rate. The weight, that interest rate, it's really an all-time low in housing, but in a couple of years, you know, the interest rate goes, then it's even much higher.
You know, 'cause like I said, at one and a half percent, you know, then we'll be back at contract renegotiations on all fronts, you know, at the point that happens and I know we're talking multiple percentage points at that point, who knows if we can be able to get it, you know, any of these other regular increases into, into the tax level.
Okay.
Let's keep it going.
That's it, doesn't hurt to try.
Yep.
That's it, I guess thank you both for coming out tonight, appreciate it. And next on the agenda, Mr. Waters, we have another presentation, the Community Development Block Grant.
Absolutely, and Mr. Sprague?
And good evening to both of you.
Good evening, this is President, this is Vice President, members of the council, this manager, this is someone, so, we're here. And we're here this evening, when I say we made the Community Development Block Grant Coordinator, Julie Letty, in the background, who is a, would be a recipient of, very easily would be recipient of funding for the Community Development Block Grant Program. And what we'll be requesting is that you pass a resolution authorizing the town manager to submit an application to the state Housing and Community Development Agency for grant monies under the CDBG program. By way of background, the, each year, the U.S. United States Department of Housing and Urban Development allocates funds amongst the various states to assist low and moderate income families, individuals. And in the past decade, partly because of the recession, that funding has continually decreased, although fortunately last year, we were successful in getting a CDBG grant, successful in getting five hundred and eight thousand dollars, four hundred thousand of which would go to a housing project of County Housing Association. And the way the process works is that the state sends out to the different cities and towns, sort of requests for applications for the Community Development Block Grant Funds. And at that point internally, Gale, part of the CDBG coordinator will contact various nonprofit agencies, including very often, always really, County Housing Authority, another agency, nonprofits, to determine what, if any, funds that they are seeking for this particular year. And then when that information is gathered, it's then submitted to the planning commission and the planning commission will then rate the various matters that are, the various applications and then send a recommendation to the town council to authorize the town manager to submit an application. This year, the, the planning commission, it's on April twenty-seventh, recommended to the council that the following priority, that, number one, that monies be allocated to the County Housing Authority for roofs for four buildings involving forty-eight units on Mulberry Drive, which is on Buffalo North Road. This represents a portion of the buildings there and it represents one half of what it would cost for the roofing, the County Housing Authority would absorb the cost of the other half for these four buildings and also would absorb the cost of several other buildings which it has there, which are in dire need of new roofs. Secondly, the second priority that the planning commission recommended was housing habitation, habitation for major repairs. And this is administered by the Planning Department, CDBG coordinator. And this involves, it's the roof, shutters, bounce bags, windows, doors. The third, that the, third priority that the planning commission recommended was a through the County Housing Authority, County Housing Authority, I'm sorry, a statewide, centralized waiting list. The way it works now is that low and moderate income individuals will go to various cities and towns and submit applications, they may submit applications to all thirty-nine cities and towns, they'd be put on a waiting list. This would, these monies would go towards establishing a database so that people could either punch in on their own computer or their computer to literate that, like I am sometimes, that they could go to a, go to a housing authority and submit the data, or they can come to our office. And the fourth is the Community Housing First Time Buyer Down payment Closing Cost Assistance. And this is, was this low and moderate income families in deposits and the deposit was home and into, off of closing cost and off of, and the total was a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that we are seeking. I believe all of you received a packet of, which is really basically like a PowerPoint presentation, which set forth these items. And you won't see it this evening, you'll see it because Bob has hogged the computer for the evening, so.
We do have it in front of us, Mr. Sprague. What's that? We do have it in front of us.
Yeah, okay, good. I mean, I can go through every single one or if I.
I don't think that's necessary, you know, this be question of the council. The grant total is one hundred and sixty-four thousand that you'd be applying for if we authorize that?
That's right.
Okay, and again, just familiarize myself with this, is that you applied for the grant? Let's say you're successful in the grant.
Yes.
What additional monies have, does it affect the town? I mean, is this money coming from the feds?
All money comes from the feds.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
In other words, all.
And we also have some monies that.
Right.
From prior years that.
Okay.
From the feds that can be utilized.
Okay, alright, so this is basically just authorizing the town to ask for, apply for the grant?
Precisely.
Okay, I understand that. Any questions of the council, Mr. McGee?
No, I love grants, I mean, it's, we doesn't have to go to cost taxpayer or anything, so it's, to me, it's a no brainer, I mean, I wanna, we can get all this work done, it's not going to lose the tax fees by requesting a third of the money, that's great.
I was just gonna ask, is there generally an amount where you stop asking as to what you think with the other cities and towns and how much Coventry might be awarded, any, what do you call it, a Ouija board, any?
Much is really driven by the nonprofit agencies that come to the town, such as County Housing Authority, that's why Julie was kind enough at my request to come here to see things, in case she had any questions, because she's, we'd be getting the bulk of the money.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the town has been pretty successful in past years with receiving the grants. I mean, that's, to me, that's a plus. I don't know if any council people have any questions of Mrs. Letty or Mr. Sprague or anyone, go ahead, Mr. Lawson.
I just, I know I brought this up before, the whole roadmap Rhode Island issue. And not that I'm not, not that I'm against grants, Gil, you know that, and Julie, you know how I feel about getting as much as we can, but there is always a cost and I really do think we have to look ahead to the roadmap Rhode Island, it's not shelved, it's coming back, Matty Ello brought it back. And there is a house bill right now, seventy-nine eighty-five, which has been referred to House Finance regarding low income, have you seen this? Do you know where it's at? I couldn't find anything today about where.
It's been held for further study at this point?
Oh, we all know what that means.
Exactly.
Yeah, because it said House Fin, it referred to House Finance.
That's probably definitely held for further study.
Yeah. But when you're taking money from HUD and we're not meeting our low and moderate requirements, what percentage are we at, we're at?
That does not, that's totally true, okay. I think what you're going to do is, are required to have ten percent.
Right.
Ten percent low and moderate housing, okay. We have until twenty-twenty-five to achieve that. In two thousand and five, late two thousand and five, late near two thousand and five, we had about three point six percent low and moderate income housing. We currently have about, the last report was five point three eight percent, but that will increase because we have some that have not yet to be built, have yet to be built. So as far as we stand, we stand pretty high up as far as being, being close to the ten percent in most communities. Those do not include Central Falls, West Wall.
Right, yeah.
What's that?
I know, I mean.
I think there's more of them that have already.
Exceeded.
Exceeded, I think they exceeded.
That's what this bill would do, it would give you credits, you could buy, sort of buy their credits. So I just wanna make sure that we're keeping an eye on roadmap. I had a call from one of our reps today, knowing, she knew that this was coming up on the agenda, so I just wanna make sure that.
I will say that.
I know the ladies are keeping an eye on roadmap and.
I will say that the planning commission, on every application. I will say that the, the Planning Commission, on every application, any large subdivision, looks at the, uh, number of low-income, and, uh, and urges developers to include, so we do, do not have a requirement that they include, um, low and moderate income, 'cause that can be a, um, somewhat of a testable legal matter. East Greenwich, uh, not, East Greenwich imposed a bounty, uh, imposed a fee if you did not include sufficient or any low and moderate income housing. The ground Supreme Court shot that down.
Well, I mean, in East Greenwich, the feds came in and took some land.
They made it low income.
I mean, they can come in, I mean, they've done it in Baltimore and other cities, I just wanna make sure we're, you know, as long as the ladies know that...
You, what it was at the time, when this was, when it was enacted in two thousand and five, was that, at that time, you had a certain period of time, which is a limited period of time, to either achieve the ten percent or to, um, come up with a plan. We came up with a thirty-year plan, and the state said, no, that's not good enough, will limit you to twenty years to achieve your, um, ten percent, um, mandate, uh, so, the, the Planning Commission's been pretty, uh, beautiful as far as that, um, what has happened now really is that, uh, in recent years, there's not much of a distinction between low and moderate income housing and market rate housing. Um, that hopefully will, I mean, that presumably, with the, uh, unemployment rate going down, eventually will, um, we'll see a separation there.
Okay, all right.
And, uh, I can see something, we, we had mentioned a couple meetings back about, uh, if it was any interest with the state delegation attempting to put the, uh, mobile home parks backed up, that I know has been denied on a couple occasions, but, uh, if we, if a mobile home parks were put on for affordable housing, we would definitely meet a requirement.
With arts, with arts, succeeded by about four-hundred...
I mean, it'd be great if they would, you know, if the state delegation would attempt to do that, again, I think I see Mr. Rillo back there, I don't know if, uh, if that's been something that's considered, or too...
We'd have to do some...
Yeah, that'd be great, I mean...
Okay, uh, any other questions in the council, Mr. Sprague, or the issue, matter?
I just have a comment. I just wanna thank you for doing such a good job at trying to bring in the grants, and Julie for being very frugal and smart about where you spend the money and being a watchdog, because it's something that we can't count on all the time, and, so, good job, very good job, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks for coming out tonight.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda, we have G, approval of town council minutes, April eleventh, and of the meeting, April twenty-fifth, which I was not able to attend. Um, I know that, uh, are there any corrections or comments or amendments or deletions on either of those minutes, either of those meetings? I, uh, if, if not, I, I do have, um, one, uh, this is George, and, um, on April twenty-fifth, I know you have me as absent, uh, however, on page two, I don't know if Mr. Waters pointed this out to you, but, uh, presentation of the sewer extension options, paragraph three, uh, you have me agreeing, which, uh, me not being present, I don't know if that is some other council person, do you know, have you been able to check back and see who that was?
I, I can't even find it.
Uh, well, okay, it's page two of the minutes for the April twenty-fifth, uh, meeting, and it's, it comes under the presentation of the sewer extension options that Glenn Skirka talked on. Second paragraph, Councilwoman Duxbury starts off, and the third paragraph, um...
I see it, I see it, yeah.
You see it, okay, so you'll have to scratch me out and find out who that might been. Uh, basically, uh, I don't have any other questions of either of those minutes, to be honest. Does anyone else have any comments or questions regarding those two? Well, then, um, I will have to abstain from the vote on the twenty-fifth, I don't know, do we do these separate that way, or, uh, all in favor of approval of minutes for April eleventh?
Need a motion.
Uh, motion, all those, that's what I'm asking for. Uh, vote, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the minutes of April eleventh?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty-fifth meeting with the one correction, is that, okay, second?
Second.
Okay, um, those all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will abstain on that vote, not being here. Okay, thank you very much. H, President's comments, uh, I know we've been doing a good hour here, I, I just have a few, uh, first of all, uh, I'd like to announce that my wife, Carol, and I are, uh, are blessed with a new grandchild, uh, born on April twenty-second, um, emergency C-section, so we, uh, we flew down at six AM on the twenty-fourth. Uh, long story short, uh, my granddaughter was born at the Naval Hospital at Camp Lejeune, North Carolina, uh, Scarlet, uh, three weeks early, but, uh, the baby's doing well, and my daughter's doing well. So, um, that is why I wasn't in attendance at that one meeting that I missed so far this term. The, uh, second comment I have is, uh, on Saturday, May fourteenth, from eleven AM to two-thirty, uh, we have, uh, at the town annex, and correct me, Mr. McGee, if I'm wrong, uh, we have the Coventry Compost Fest, which, uh, will be Saturday, this coming Saturday, on the fourteenth, and, uh, it's basically free, uh, composting workshops, raffle for, uh, free compost bin, and, uh, other good things to learn, is that correct? Still on?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thirdly, also on May fourteenth, uh, Saturday, May fourteenth, from ten AM to five PM, and then, uh, again, on Sunday, May fifteenth, from ten AM to four PM, uh, and I know people, some people may have seen this, but, uh, we're, we're having the Fourth Annual Revolutionary War reenactment and encampment over at the, uh, General Nathaniel Green Homestead, fifty Taff Street Coventry, um, the admission price, uh, six dollars for adults, four dollars for children, uh, it's a twenty-dollar maximum per family if you, um, bring a lot of children and, and two adults, so, uh, I know I've attended in the past, hopefully the weather will cooperate, uh, whether or not cooperating, it'll go. Uh, it's something to see if people haven't attended that, um, it's, it's really, uh, something for kids to see. I know, uh, they asked me to read at the middle school this, uh, past month, and I pointed out, I, I read, uh, one chapter of the, uh, the book, Rise and Fight Again, Nathaniel Green, and, and I asked them how many people had, uh, visited the homestead, and out of, uh, two classes combined, uh, probably at least sixty students, about four hands went up. I go, four? And, and to me, uh, I, I don't know if they've gone other directions, but, uh, it's something that all Coventry residents should see. Uh, you'll have an opportunity to go through the homestead, but to see this reenactment is, is really something. Uh, cannons or, uh, bone, uh, go off and, uh, wear ear protection if, uh, you've got sensitive ears, but, that said, I wanted to get that word in. Uh, lastly, uh, I know that it's been pointed out, um, that, uh, the town, um, from what I understand, has been successful, uh, Parks and Rec and Library were getting that grant that they were waiting for, is that true, Mrs. Blatchett? Uh, that, uh, successful for the tot lot, so I guess it's, uh, in the works now, is that correct? And that's a good thing, uh, I love...